Thank you. Good evening, it is 5:05, I'm sorry for the delayed start of the meeting, we had a little technical glitch, but we will begin the New Market School Board at this time with the Pledge of Allegiance, please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Anarchia and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
And open the Florida Public Comment, as we have no one in the audience right now. I will proceed with closing public comment at 5:05, and we'll proceed with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is committee reports. Are there any committees that have held meetings since our last meeting that people would like to report on? Gary, have you heard anything from the Budget Committee about what their whole status is going to be and what the next meeting is and who the Chair is?
Uh, the next meeting is 19th, on Monday, and Chair.
Okay.
So it's an organization.
Okay. You know, in, for all of us, any of the committees, if you could just, when meetings are coming up, just drop a note to Susan to make sure she knows too, especially ones like the Budget, because she was unaware of that, so she could be aware of it too. Not that they want her to come, but just so we can be prepared. Any other reports? Okay. The next, the first item on discussion items is the third quarter financials. We had a report from, that was submitted by Jana Mellon, the Business Administrator, detailing the third quarter financials. As per a few minutes ago, Jana had not received any questions. Does any, do any of the Board members have any questions about the report that maybe Susan can address? And if not, we can send them back to Jana for further edification. I thought it was a fairly, a very well-done and thorough report. Any thoughts? Okay. Hearing none, the next thing is a custodial analysis presentation. And Susan, if you just want to give the background about that.
Sure. So, I'm going to guess about a month ago, or at least maybe three or four meetings ago, when Devin started, right after he started, he had come in and done a presentation. And as you know, we've struggled all year to maintain adequate staffing for our facilities. And so, we asked him if he could please review, you know, our programs and identify what our needs are and work with the group of people to come up with, you know, some options for how we can move forward. We have new buildings, the building project is about done, and we're going to, you know, bring closure to that. We have more space, we have more equipment, and, you know, we want to keep these assets maintained at a high level. So, this presentation that you have here tonight is just the needs part of it. You know, what are our needs based on our current buildings and uses? So, that's what this is. And, so Devin and Gary will be on that task force, and a few town folks, Karen, will be on that. Perhaps our head custodians will be part of that. I think there was, Gary, a resident who, you know, this is an area of expertise.
Great.
They did reach out to him. So they're going to start meeting as soon as next week to start to look at, okay, so here's the information about, you know, what our needs are, based on our square footage and cleanliness standards. And then they'll work from there to identify options for addressing all of our needs and come back to us with a report and recommendation. So, as opposed to waiting until the very end and nobody on the committee knowing where, you know, what the status was. I had asked Jen if she could put together some information, just to keep it on the forefront of the entire Board's mind.
Right.
And provide Gary with some information as he goes into the task force, so that he's familiar with the analysis that had been completed by them. So, that's what that is all about.
It'll be helpful to have that baseline when the feedback comes back.
Yes. So they'll put a comprehensive report, and then these items will be in it, but at least you won't be starting from ground zero.
Well, I'd like if you can understand the different levels. So it explains us where we're standing, looking into it.
Yes. So, and the other thing, just to remind you, in our budget, we have ten positions, basically. One is a maintenance position, actually two halftime positions, for those who were on the Board. Last year, we moved forward with two halftime maintenance positions, one in each building. And the rest are custodians. But, based on the FTE that's in our budget right now, it will not lead us to maintaining high levels of cleanliness in our buildings. So, I mean, that's kind of the big takeaway from that. So, what are the options, you know? And so they're going to look at things like, how much money do we have, and what FTE do we have? She's presented that with Devin pretty nicely here, so we understand that. But there's a lot of things that happen in schools, in addition to cleaning, that you need your buildings and grounds staff to support, including use of facilities. You know, when we have events, they set them up, they break them down. When you think about something as, seems as benign as a clinic, and the amount of time and effort that went into planning for that, and then having them set everything up, and spraying things down, and making sure sanitizer's there, and signage is up, and, you know, all of that, you know? That's not even taken into consideration when you're looking at just the cleaning, right? So they do that, they set up events for us, whether they're internal or rentals, once we get to a point in time where we invite people back in. And then there's all the maintenance that takes place and security, so it's a lot. So they're going to look at the whole picture and make a recommendation for what we need to do moving forward, so.
And Gary, if we have any questions, should we filter them to you for the task force, or how would you like to handle that?
I don't know, whatever the protocol is, I don't know.
I think that'd be appropriate, since you're on the, on, you know, I think, you know, go ahead and CC me on them if you feel comfortable doing that. But just so Gary can share any thoughts that we might have. I am not a custodial expert, so you won't be hearing a lot from me, but there are others that might have some input that can be valuable. The next person, the next thing, Susan, is the in-person learning plan revision.
Yes.
If you could process that for us and walk us through that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So we all are very aware that the Governor put into place an emergency order a couple of weeks ago now, requiring all schools to return to in-person learning five days a week. The order also said that we would need to maintain remote learning options for parents who wish to continue in that model. And the third part of the order stated that school districts could not shift to remote for more than forty-eight hours without seeking a waiver from the state. So, all of the whereas and wherefores and therefores kind of boil down to, you know, those three big ideas. Of course, we all had many, many questions, because this was announced at a press conference. There was no order available to read, that wasn't made available to us, you know, until later on Friday afternoon. And so we had a meeting with the Commissioner, asked a whole bunch of questions. This Board had met, I shared with you some of what we had heard there. And then, last Wednesday, he prepared a Q and A in response to the questions that we had asked. And, you know, there were all kinds of questions, some were pertinent to us and some were not. But as we looked at, you know, our plan and what we needed to do, there were three kind of important items that he mentioned, or how he responded to, that helped provide guidance for what, you know, we needed to focus our attention on for us. And one idea here, and I said it before, that they still do support, you know, following safety guidelines, you know? You know, that to the greatest degree possible, that we should be implementing mitigation protocols in schools and everywhere. Some of those have changed over time, and some have not. But that, to the greatest extent possible, we should be following safety protocols. And the other thing that was really helpful and important is that when the Governor mentioned five days, you know, in our field, we have what's called time on learning requirements, or a certain amount of instructional time that we are mandated to provide for all students. And you meet that requirement in one of two ways. You are either in school a hundred and eighty days, and that meets the requirement, or you're in school a certain number of hours, and that meets the requirement. So, that was really important, because, you know, in his words, which I, you know, actually, those are his written words, everything in italic is, you know, coming from state documents. But, he says, you know, "Emergency Order 89 references five." However, as you know, required instructional time can be measured in hours or days. So that was helpful, you know, as we were looking at how does this impact what we would put forth for a plan. And I'll tell you, and you'll see why that's important in a minute. And then, the other thing that I thought was really helpful too, is that he differentiated for the waiver requirements, stating that no waiver is required if quarantine and or isolation is directed by the State Health Department. So, I think those were, you know, kind of some of the really important clarifying features of the Q and A that the Commissioner provided. So, what we did is we looked, we wanted to, to the greatest degree possible, maintain consistency with our plan that's currently in place. I mean, students understand, you know, all of our protocols, they understand the schedules. Staff does as well, and so maintaining as much consistency as possible, we thought was really important. You know, we don't want to be creating anxiety, confusion here, when we're trying to work diligently to support learning and close, you know, competency gaps that we're seeing, you know? And so, so that was really important. And of course, in order for us to be able to shift from a four-day to a five-day schedule, we had to figure out how we're going to address the teacher prep time, you know? And so, all of that was scheduled to take place on Friday, as well as all the PD and the meetings and everything else. We gutted our schedule Monday through Thursday and packed everything on a Friday, so that was another challenge to overcome. So, in short, our plan boils down to just a few changes that we will need to make in order to accomplish this five-day-a-week schedule. And so, number one, the arrival and dismissal protocol will be altered. And so, current recommendations are that parents screen at home before they send their children off to school. And I know our families are used to doing that now, or kids, if they're older, are used to doing that now. That's been part of our protocol all along, so that would remain the same change. But when they arrive on campus, they still go to the five doors, that doesn't change. We can't have kids congregating before and after school, you know, that doesn't change. But they won't be temperature-checked on their way in. So that's a big protocol change that is not currently, you know, what they're suggesting as the, a huge mitigating strategy, though that was a big one at the beginning of the summer and throughout our... So that, what that does for us, and so kids will transition into the classroom, and then the teachers will do another kind of wellness check on the students. And anybody that's, you know, experiencing symptoms or doesn't look well will be sent to the nurse, and our protocols remain the same there. It doesn't change the protocol for adults. The adults still come in the same entrance, they are doing temperature checks, they are signing in. All of that remains the same for adults. It's only the student that will not be temperature-checked moving forward for the rest of the year.
And Susan, people can find an update, will be able to find an updated screen, at-home screening thing for the parents on the website, correct?
Yes, so we're working on updating our website, so that this plan, along with the bus schedules and the checklist, will be the first thing, if you punch that protocol, COVID operations, whatever that says on their front landing page. When you punch that, it'll take you to the most current documents, so we're doing work on that now, so that, once we get these all posted up, parents won't have to scan through or look. Andrew said that he found difficulty finding some protocols, so it prompted me to say, you know, let's move that around, so what's relevant right now is what people see. But if they wanted to see what, you know, what other protocols might be.
Right.
You know, they could find that easily as well. But, so we're doing some work on that, to put those right there, so people can find them. But, what this allows us to do is compress the arrival and dismissal times. And by doing that, we can then create space in the schedule for us to reintroduce the planning periods. And as opposed to changing everybody's schedule around, which would be, you know, really kooky at this point, what we're doing is we're taking the planning and prep to be the first period of a teacher's day. And this is really helpful, because having common planning time is always difficult.
Right.
And so there is an advantage to that, and that was one of the things we really felt was an enhancement, is that when we were all together on Fridays, you had common planning time. So that if you're working with somebody, or you have new teachers that are working on something, that you had a common planning time to be able to get together. And so, moving that to the front of the day, then we can keep the schedules pretty much the same as they were before. For secondary students, you know, having schools start around eight-thirty, if you do sleep time studies, and I know one of those was done prior to my arrival, but having kids, you know, start a little bit later, instead of earlier, and, you know, first thing in the morning, is actually consistent with, you know, the sleep science studies. So that, I think, is a positive thing. There still is a bit of a, at the elementary school, there's still going to be some staggering. They're just not going to be as exaggerated as they were before. I reached out to the Epping Superintendent, because they have a similar model, and I actually had asked him about, you know, how, you know, how they were approaching that. And he said they hadn't actually implemented a staggered start there. And so I said, well, is that chaotic, you know, how are you doing that? And then he pointed out that, because everyone cannot enter the campus at the same time anyways, that parents are moving through, dropping off, and, you know, you know, it kind of in an organic way staggered it. Now, I'm not saying it's ideal, because of course, it could have an impact. And of course, with the littler kids at the elementary school, we want to have time, you know, people to help support getting kids here. And I also think it's really nice to have students be welcomed into a building in the morning, regardless of what school you're in. So, we're going to maintain more of a staggered start. Dismissal at the junior, senior high school will be staggered, you know, by about five or six minutes, so that it's not like a, you know, complete, you know, whistle blows and everybody bolts type of an atmosphere. And if we have to make some modifications, you know, we will. I reached out and sent our plan to both chiefs and the town manager and our public health director, so that they were aware of this, and then, you know, said to them that, you know, we probably will need some support with the change in arrival and dismissal, you know, when we start off for that first week, just to help us. And then we'll evaluate, like we did the last time, and if we have to make modifications, we will. But, you know, the principals have been timing, you know, how long does it take for different things? And they feel that this is a very doable plan.
Can I just go back a step? So SST arrives at nine-thirty, they arrive at noon time? So how, right now, they're going to a door, and they all wait together to come in? Right, when the bus comes off, they get dropped off, they wait for the door to open? Are they still going to do some temperature checks, or we're just going to let them in the building?
No, they'll still, they'll still be, you know, social distancing and all of that, an orderly process coming in, but we won't be doing temperature checks on any students after April the third. But all other protocols remain, mask, you know, social distancing, to the greatest extent possible. We're not, you know, I mean, kids are eating in their classrooms, like, all of that remains the same. The UA schedules, the only thing that, you know, may change a bit is for those remote students who are returning, you know, who haven't been on campus all year, you know, there'll be a little bit of, you know, we're still trying to work at the junior, senior high through how their schedule's going to play out for them, because some of them are taking V-Lax, and, you know, kind of trying to make some adjustments there. But both principals feel very confident and comfortable with the proposal that we have before you tonight. So, the arrival and dismissal is really the big thing. And again, from the parent perspective, the other part of that is that the bus schedules will change. As I say, the bus schedules will be changing, and as soon as the bus company will post them up, we reduced the number of buses, and we created all of our schedules based on what parents told us they needed, right? So we had asked in our survey in the summer, do you want remote, or are you going to come in person? And if you're coming in person, will you be sending your students on the bus? Knowing that we are not going to be able to socially distance on the bus. We've been clear about that, that's not changing, we're still not going to be able to do that, so let us know. And then we gave that information to the bus company, and then the buses were arranged around that, around what our needs were. But with more kids coming back, and the change of the schedule, we thought, you know, more parents might want to send their kids on the bus. We don't know, we don't have time to gather all that data and redo it. So we're just going back to the five buses that we've traditionally had, and the more traditional bus schedules. So it shouldn't be, if you've taken the bus, it shouldn't be wildly different than maybe what you experienced last year or in prior years, it'll just be different than what we're doing this year, and we'll get those bus schedules up.
When do you think we could have, when can they expect those, the bus schedules?
Hopefully, you know, we'll get them by Friday or Monday at the latest. I know they're actively working on them now. And we asked parents last night at the parent meeting, if they were, and they knew that they were going to change, to please contact us, you know, so we can balance out the bus loads and be as prepared as we can. So the third item is, of course, that we have to take all those remote students, and we have to, you know, make adjustments in our schedules for them. At the junior, senior high school, likely they will not be in the same section that they were, though they will more than likely have the same teacher, because the teachers are teaching specific subjects at that level. At the elementary school, students that are coming in will not have the same teacher, because we still have lots of students that are remote and working with a remote teacher that they've been with all year. So they will be teaching their class. So, any students coming back at the elementary school will then shift.
No, I, okay, thank you.
Do we have a final number on the students that have been remote, that will be coming back into in-person yet?
About ten percent of the remote students are coming back. So ninety percent are staying out.
Yep.
That may fluctuate a little bit after last night's meeting, you know? When parents were reassured that we would be able to maintain the same protocol. when parents were reassured that we were, would be able to maintain the same protocols. But I, I don't think so and the principals don't think it's much different than what we're seeing right now. But we can accommodate if, but we need to know sooner than later. And then the school calendar changes from what was published last and what you approved last. So that's part of what you would be approving tonight is the, is the calendar. And so I'm going to just walk through the changes to the calendar. Do you have, Patty give you a packet?
Aye, I, I looked at it before I came.
Okay.
Is it in there?
It's in your packet, yeah.
And Andrew, I have, I can give you this one.
I know what you're talking about. I looked at it before we came.
Okay.
Because I have an spare copy if you want it.
Okay, yeah. But it's in here?
I thought so. I asked Patty if she would give you a full packet tonight. I looked at it before, that's. There it is, there it is. I see your thumb on something.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. So the, the proposal is on page five, Andrew, if you're, if you're looking. And then the calendar is on the very last page. But I'll walk through the changes just for the viewing audience. So on April the twenty-third, which is next Friday, it, no, schools will not, students will not attend school that day. There, there's no school for students. Said another way, there's no students on the twenty-third. That will be a staff workday. So next week will be exactly the way it has always been. The schedule changes, the bus schedules, all of that will take place on May the third. So we're full-time next week. Friday is just a full, a, a staff workday. May the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth will be half-days. I explained in the document, all of the work and our priorities and the things that we do on Fridays. And so certainly the teacher planning and prep can be done in the morning. But a lot of the activities that we do, have done district-wide or school-wide that are really important to our summer programming and our academic improvement plan are embedded in the work that we've been doing on Fridays. So we are going to have, we are going to need two half-days on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. And so NES would dismiss at noon and the junior, senior high would dismiss at eleven-thirty on those days. And the schedule, I have reviewed it with the rec department, so they're aware. So they will be able to modify what they're doing now. They're providing support and option for families now on Fridays. They're, they know that this is, this is what our plan is and they've made those modifications. The other thing, I'll just interject here is that they're looking at, and trying to hire somebody to offer a before-school program at the rec department. I wasn't aware that that was a real need for parents. And so they have an ad out and so kind of it's a shout-out if anybody's interested in working on a before-school in, in that program, please contact the rec department. And they can share more information about what they're looking for. But then parents would be able to drop their kids off early on their way to work. And I've talked to the bus company to see if, after the last drop at the elementary school, if they can come and pick the kids at the rec and then bring them. And so we feel like we can do that. We just need numbers. And as soon as the rec department's able to secure somebody, then information will come out to parents so that they can, they can, you know, sign up for before-school programming if, if they, if they need that option for them. Okay, so continuing on, June the eleventh is scheduled to be our, our graduation day. So that's Friday, June the eleventh. That's on the, on the calendar before you. If rains, because it will be outside, then the rain day would be Saturday morning. We've met with Project Graduation and they're, they're aware of that. In fact, it was part of our conversation with them that, you know, they felt that if we did it on Saturday morning, then they could make their, their project graduation plans on Saturday evening and then they wouldn't have to make any changes. They could secure venues and all of that or whatever they're planning on. I'm not, not sure what that is, but that they could lock in whatever activities they were going to for the kids and not have to worry about finding rain dates themselves. So, so that's graduation. Then the eighteenth would still remain our final day of the school year. Summer school for the elementary school will begin on Monday, the twenty-first and end on June the thirty-first. So there's only one session and this is for kind of competency recovery. Once we identify in those half-days, you know, students that may be struggling, we will reach out to the families and, and see if they would like to take advantage of this. And if there's more, you know, openings available, then we'll go to the next kind of cohort. And so that's one of the reasons why we need those half-days is to be able to, to kind of get that and coordinated. So summer school for the elementary school, that it will be the only summer school session. And I'm not talking about extended-year programming. Extended year program for, for students that might have learning loss if, if they weren't provided with support over the summer will still take place. It's always been the month of July. It will be in the month of July for those EYS eligible students. But for, for, for students that are struggling this year and need some additional support for the elementary school, that, that will be it. We're looking at summer session one at the junior, senior high school would be from the twenty-first to the thirty-first again. These are four days a week. And we, you know, presented that information at the last meeting, so I don't want to get into great detail on it. But I, we did mark it on the calendars again. I think, you know, parents, it hasn't been on your calendar in the past and I just think it's really helpful.
It wasn't happening in the past.
Yes, well, last, last year we-
Last year, but before last year it was not happening.
Yes, so, so I just think it's helpful when people are making plans. If they know where, parents know where their kids are at. And, you know, if you want them to have the additional support, it doesn't cost parents any money. And, and we're here to try to support student learning, so.
Do you have teachers for that already?
We are, we have applications in. We don't have sufficient yet, but we thought we would offer that to our staff. And if we aren't able to recruit enough, that, then we have time to offer it out and run an ad in the paper. Last year we didn't have enough time, you know, none of us did because we were, we were trying to figure everything out as we were flying the ship. So, or flying the plane, I guess. So just, so those are the changes to the calendar. And then in your packet, and you can read, we're all literate here. So I'm not going to sit here and read through what the schedules were. We did review them with staff and, and parents last night. So I'll, I'll leave that, you know, for you to, you know, digest. And as I said, the last page has all those calendar changes reflected.
I want to compliment you on the meeting yesterday. Like it was really well-run, especially for a Zoom meeting, so thank you.
Yes. We didn't, we didn't have tons of questions, I, I think in part maybe because there's not tons and tons of changes. And we really don't have a choice in the matter anyways. We're trying-
The feedback that Andrew, you know, to Andrew had said is that it was a well-reared meeting and that people are very pleased that none of the major protocols, except for the temperature checks, are being changed because they feel safer with that. And they are amazed by the speed at which we've been able to come up with a plan that makes sense. So thank you to the Advent team for getting this done as promptly as you did because it was a yeoman's job, so thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts about that?
Is graduation at the elementary school this year, again? Where's the graduation occurring this year?
Where is it? It will be outside again. Have we finalized those plans? We're still working on the plans, but we've looked at all options. We contacted UNH. They are not offering up any space over there. We looked at the space behind the school and the rec area. It's, there's a lot of challenges when we walk that, including it doesn't drain well. If there's any rain-
If there's disruptions going on.
Then that would be problematic. We were trying to think, we heard that families wanted, if at all possible, to be able to invite their grandparents. The ground there is not ideal, you know, for people to be in. You know, so we tried to take into consideration those factors, anybody in a wheelchair. It's not negotiable back. And so the graduation will take place in front of the school. I heard from some parents that they were concerned of traffic noise. And so I, I did reach out to Steve and the emergency management team and asked them if we could stop traffic or detour traffic around that area during graduation. And he said that he felt that that was doable, that they do do those kinds of things for marathons and other different things. He did say that, I guess, the, the town has, I don't know if I'm using the right terms, but you'll understand what I, the concept of it is they've petitioned the state to take ownership of that road there so that New Market owns it. Right now, we don't own that road. It's a state-owned road. And that has been in the works for a little bit. And he said he should hear soon if New Market will take ownership of it. And if so, then the process for getting the detour put in is one thing. And if not, we can still petition the state to do that. And he's working with us on that. And we're going to meet next week with our emergency management team in the town to review that. But that was the biggest, the, the only real big complaint, I think, that we heard in it, from families.
Well, it's, well, listen, it's not attractive. You can't, you can't put lipstick on a pig. But if anybody who has been here a long time, we used to have the graduation in the soccer field and we don't anymore because of those reasons that you've mentioned. It wasn't level, it, it ruined the field. And we spent a lot of money on those fields. It did ruin the fields, so.
It, but I want to say this. I, I know that it sounds like, oh my God, a parking lot, how can you do such a thing? But we did go out and actually kind of set it up and imagine it and put, it's pretty nice.
I mean, last year was not bad in the elementary school.
Yeah, I heard positive things about them.
But there was, it's a little more separated from the road, but if there's no traffic.
There's no, there, there won't be any traffic. And the other thing is we'll, we, we measured it out and it looks like, and some of this might change. So this is all like, right? But we think that we're going to be able to allow six people in. They'll walk in, it's not going to be cars like last year. They're going to have their own space. We can get the stage up. People can't be on stage. We're still going to have to do the social distancing. But kids might, you know, be able to be, it'll much, it'll look much more
And we'll have seats. Traditional. And we'll have seats. We won't be caught.
We will have seats. We've ordered the seats. We've ordered all, all kinds of stuff. It, it's going to be super. It really is. I know it's hard to imagine sometimes, but we've really have given a lot of looked everywhere, you know, to try to make this. And the kids really want to have it on campus. I know some of the parents are not keen on it and maybe a few students, but, but really kids want to have it on campus.
Well, we have traditions that we love. We love our traditions here in New Market for our graduation. We, and listen, the gyms are not exactly stunning by any point. So outside would be a little bit nicer. We'll have seats. Can we incorporate some of our other traditions?
We are.
Okay.
So we are, we're going to have, I, I know this has not gone out, but what the hell. I'm your superintendent, right? So we are going to have like a, a formal event, you know? It's not going to be a prom in, you know, with all the standard things. But we are planning a formal prom-ish type of event for the kids. We're also going to have a form of a banquet-type thing. But we're, you know, we might call it a soiree or whatever. But we're going to have one formal and one informal. We're looking at, it's going to be great. It's, it really just, we're going to send out the, you know, the program, not, not with all the details and everything to kids. I think tomorrow. I saw a draft of it today.
And I'm not asking for details because I, I personally, I'm, I'm just grateful that my child's going to have a graduation. I'm grateful they've experienced something for the end of the last two years of their high school. And I understand, nobody, none of us envisioned our child graduating in a parking lot. I can have a chair and I don't have to be in a, in a car. I can, if I can have company, if I can bring guests, that's even better. So we have to, I, I want people to stop thinking in the negative, stop being positive. If we can, if we can have more of our traditions, if there's a way we can safely do some of our traditions and make it more of a New Market graduation, I think we could be happy. I think we could get the majority of the people to be happy.
No, I, I think, and we've been working with the kids. We had a meeting with the students, not all of the students, but representatives of the senior class, class officers, I believe is who we met with last week. And they told us what it was that they really, was in their hearts, you know? What is it that you're looking for, you know? And I asked them, okay, so when you say prom, you say banquet, you know? These are words that could sometimes be synonymous. So let's, let's explore what we mean when we say these things. Because we can continue to try to plan and guess, but if you can just tell us, you know, that would be helpful. So we walked through that with them and, and I, I really do feel like this is, you know, it's going to be good. It's going to be good and we're going to-
I think it's really neat that able to come up with what they want.
Yes.
For their graduation, what they want for their formal event. You know, it's one thing as a mother to tell you what I think you should have as your prom, but after all of COVID and everything, to give them the ownership and the power and the responsibility and the privilege to do it themselves, I think is super, super cool.
And it is part of the tradition here in New Market that the kids make a lot of choices around what they want. And they've said they want certain things that, one thing that they add, they, and we haven't figured this out and I, and, and if we can figure it out between now and then, we'll try to do some form of a promenade. But I don't know that we can pull that one off. We're going to try to focus on getting them, we have one activity during the day and we have an event every single evening for them.
Yeah.
And-
Which is senior week, which is, we haven't done that in a while because it's so expensive to do. So that would be fun.
So we have something during the day and something every evening for, for the students. And we want to make sure that those are done really well. And we are working with Project Graduation and they're going to provide some embellishments. And it, it, it's, it's really going to be done. We're not being frivolous or, you know, we're not being irresponsible, but also understand that this has been one heck of a ride for these kids.
Yeah.
And we want them to have an awesome send-off. And, and we will make sure that they, they have as much as we can do for them and honor as many of the traditions as we can, so.
I think, and if that's what we could focus on, if we, we could focus more on the positive, not perfection, just positive. Maybe we could make this a pleasant experience for the kids.
And a memorable one.
Yeah, well, they survived a global pandemic. You know, like there's, I keep pointing out the positive things, yeah.
I think it's safe to say too, that we're not the only ones that have to like abridge what we normally do.
Yeah.
So I think keeping that in mind.
And you forget that because again, I always, this little New Market bubble, we, we, this is happening globally.
Yeah.
And yeah, everybody's making sacrifices. And the fact that we can make some sort of event for them is, I think is a good thing.
Yeah, they'll have their slideshow. I mean, a lot of what has been the tradition that they're really looking forward to. Not every single thing, but a lot of it we're going to be able to do, albeit with protocols in place and. But.
Any other questions about the in-person learning plan before we move to action items?
We kind of went off the track.
Well, it was on the calendar, it makes sense. And I think those are questions that people have had, so I think it's good to- Moving on to the action items, I seek a motion to approve the April first, April first and six public and, public minutes and April sixth non-public minutes. I need a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Swanson with a second from Ms. McKinnney to approve all those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. The next one is the manifest.
I seek an approval to approve the spending of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll make a motion.
We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Hemmerker with a second from Mr. Rant to approve the manifest. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously approved. The next thing, there are several bids in our packet for a variety of different things. The first one is the ancillary insurance.
Do you want me to just sort of walk through some of this?
If you could walk through them.
So one of the things- So one of the things that we are doing is kind of reviewing every aspect of, you know, our operations and looking at things that maybe haven't been looked at in quite some time. You know, when you come into, and you read a lot of documents and you, you know, try to make sense of them. And when you see opportunities to maybe rebid or clarify, you know, oftentimes there's opportunities for savings or enhanced benefits. So in this particular case, you know, this has not been, and, and it's not that benefits go, you go out to bid on benefits, right? You, you have a certain level of benefit that you have agreed to with your employee groups and you, you engage with a company to provide those. And, and when it comes to insurance, often it's not, you know, identical, right? They, they provide different levels of benefits and packages and all of that. So, you know, Jana spent some time, you know, reviewing different options for us with, you know, full knowledge of what we're required to provide for benefits based on the CBAs that we have in place. And she was able to do an analysis of the, of the different plans that, that are out there. And she's recommending that we move to the Mutual of Omaha School Care program. And we will be saving doing that. And we also get the side benefit of, school care is the, is, we have school care for health insurance, so this will kind of integrate the two insurances together. And so from an administrative standpoint, there's great advantage to it because once we enroll somebody, they would enroll in both. And it helps to coordinate benefits for employees and it helps us on the administrative side. And, and it's a good, solid, reputable company. So her recommendation is to go with Mutual of Omaha School Care and, you know, at a savings of a couple of thousand dollars per year. So that's the first, the first one before you.
Can I ask two questions real quick? You, you said that, um, that would be signed for this, health insurance, automatically get into this.
I'm sorry.
Do I understand correctly that you said that they, once they sign up for health insurance, automatically it's a life insurance as well?
That would be coordinated, yeah.
Okay.
So, so, so I'm not saying they automatically, they, they still have to fill out all the forms and everything.
Right.
But there's one, the, school care is the company that manages our, our health and dental insurance now. So it's like folding in of, of our insurance program.
Okay. So an employee would still have the option of doing the life insurance, but not the healthcare if they get through their spouse or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's not like a packet where you do all of it.
Okay.
No, if they don't need health insurance and they need life insurance, or if they don't want life insurance and they only want health, no, it's not mandating that they get all of it. They still have choice, yeah.
Thank you.
So I, do you want to approve these as I go or?
Why don't we approve as I go? I seek a motion to approve the ancillary insurance coverage recommendation. Yes, Gary?
Yeah, I was just wondering, why aren't we, what's the difference between the Equitable and Mutual of Omaha? It looks like there's a bit more of a cost savings and the packages seem similar, if not identical.
Yeah, those are questions you'll have to ask Jana. She was the one that did the analysis, so.
But there's not totally identical.
As you can only imagine in, in a way that.
Your counseling visits, you've got five with school care, only three with Equitable. Your accidental is the same. But.
Oh, death and dismemberment, actually.
Yeah, death and, death and dismemberment includes, in school care, you get sight and paraplegia.
Well, it's seventy-five percent.
Which is only seventy-five of the Equitable.
And I think the other part of it again is the value of the soft costs that's not reflected in here is why she would be recommending it. It's not significant dollars in savings different between the two. So the administrative costs by having them be unable to support them, I think she talked about that in her letter.
Gary, do you have another question?
So this premium, this is total premium, this isn't per employer, I think this is total premium amount? It must be.
Why don't we just table this until, you know, and if you can send me your questions, Gary, I'll, I'll forward them on to Jana because again, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm not able to answer.
No, I think I'm comfortable. If the total premium amounts annually is eighteen thousand, it's not worth delaying it, I don't think.
Okay. Then I will seek a motion to approve the recommendation for ancillary insurance provided by Mutual of Omaha slash School Care.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Ms. Swans, Ms. Rant. We need a second.
I will second.
A second for Mr. Swanson.
Ms. Swanson will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously passed. All right, Susan, we'll take the next one.
Okay.
Junior High Act.
Annex building. So this is, again, some of these projects are done in phases. And this, this is a project that's been going on and done in phases. And so this is the exterior portion of the annex renovation. And so this is to replace the roof, the insulation, the storefront, remove the skylights, do some related interior work and to replace the siding. There's also, I guess, some brick in the front. I was told that, you know, that you need to do repairs too. So this is like all the work on the outside of the building to make sure that the building envelope is, you know, in good shape, you know, so that our building remains upright and functional for many years to come. So that's what, that's what's included in this. And as you can see, there were three vendors that submitted bids and the lowest one is Solid Roots Construction in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred. Of course, the highest bid we got was ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy. So the recommendation is to award the contract to Solid Roots Construction in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred.
And this has been going on for about five years, I think.
Ever since we got the building.
Yeah, we bought it and there was a lot of work that had to be done inside. So the outside waited. And it's just to make it look.
Just so it could be used as a functional art room for as long as it was.
Yeah. Well, it leaks right now.
It probably did this too.
So the idea here is to.
Well, it doesn't flood anymore. We use the flood and leak.
Yeah, yeah, there was that too. But I think most, I, I think the, there was, Jana had mentioned it or Devin had it the last, I mean, there's a little bit of electrical work that needs to be done, but other than that, I don't think that's a big issue.
It might be in the front because I think we had to do the back when we did pottery room, photography room. So it must be in the front maybe?
I did a lot of. I honestly, I'm not, I'm not in, in the middle of that one, so I couldn't tell you. I just know that this is the exterior work. This should be the, the last. And then, you know, our, once, I think these are completed, the ones before you tonight as far as those buildings go and the, and up here, you know, we'll, we'll have kind of completed the renovations to bring our schools up into, up to code and safe and secure and, you know, weather tight and all of that, so.
I seek a motion to approve the recommendation of awarding the junior high annex renovation project to Solid Roots Construction in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney with a second from Mr. Swanson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. The next one is the kitchenette.
Yes, so a lot of work has been done. HVAC systems, you know, insulation. We still have some work to do on the security systems, I will say that. But, you know, the carpets and all of that have been done. And this is the last, the last piece. This wasn't done with the other flooring parts and the other work that had been done there because this requires some carpentry. The floors, I guess, are problematic and they need some additional, you know, work that was kind of beyond the scope of the company that was doing some of the painting and all of that. So this is the last piece, I think, big piece of work that needs to be done in the SAU area up there. And it's to do that, that kitchenette. I think you all walked through that before. It's not to replace the refrigerator, we'd reuse that, but there's some electrical work that, you know, and some hazards in there. And, and so this should take care of the last part of that work that's been going on for a couple of years now.
Is it fair to say this is more about safety than it is about having a nice?
Well, some of it's health.
Okay.
Right? Because carpet, having carpet in a room like that where you're, you have food and prep and, you know, water, that's, that's, there's, there's like one bathroom up there and there's one sink for everybody on that floor. And if you looked at the carpet, it's, it's pretty disgusting. But yeah, so, so I, I think it's, it's health and safety and, you know, as, as well as, you know, some updating of, of, you know, the cabinets and things that are in there in order to be able to accommodate and properly, you know, put the plumbing in where it should be and you don't have cords running around, running underneath where the sink area is, you know? So, yeah, it's a combination of all that.
The majority of it would be safety.
Okay.
Sometimes when you get used to something, you don't see it for what it is anymore. But when we say there are cords running over the sink, there are cords running over the sink. Because there's what, two outlets?
Yeah, and, and, and because the water has to be filtered, I, I'm not an expert in this. I'm just, this is my understanding. You, you can't drink the water there. So there's a, a system that's hooked into the plumbing so that you can get water, but that system is instead of being protected under there, you see that little, kind of looks like a.
A water cooler.
A water cooler, but it's actually attached to and filtered through. But that's like kind of out in the room there. And the cords and stuff go behind it because, you know, they found a problem and then the, the solution was to do that. It wasn't to, to really put a, a long-term solution and it was just a, a temporary one. And maybe the reason why, I don't know, I'm, I'm just guessing. The reason why might have been because there's been a whole series of projects since I've been here and prior to my arrival. And I'm guessing that they had some of these things slated and why invest in that when you've, when you have these other pieces that need to be done first, I'm guessing.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I was pretty shocked at the condition of the SAU kitchen, I got to say. I was very disappointed in that.
Yeah, I, I honestly, like, when I saw this at first, like someone that saw this up there, see her quite a bit, I was like, yeah, nice kitchen. And it is really, it's like, it's safety.
It's safety.
And health. And I, I.
Yeah.
I don't want people to get the wrong perception.
Andy, thank you for suggesting that people go take a look at it. Because I, you know, it was, it was very proactive of you to think of that as an option because I think seeing it is, makes it better.
Yeah.
So hearing this, I seek a motion to accept the negotiated revised bid amount of seventeen thousand dollars for the SAU kitchenette renovation. And the vendor is Moore and Contracting Services.
So moved.
Need a second?
A second.
We've got a motion from Mr. Hemmerker with a second from Mr. Rant. Any more discussion, any questions?
Just for the record, seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Thank you.
Sub recorded. Pimple.
Thank you. We'll move on to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Approved unanimously. The next one is transportation, Susan. We got to get the kids to school.
We got to get the kids to school and there isn't multiple bids because there's only one vendor. So I did want to point out two things. Right now, at the elementary school, we have seven runs and five buses. And it's, it creates some, some challenges that are not ideal and that we're hoping to overcome by adding a sixth bus. So what happens is that because there's so many kids riding and there was only five buses in the contract, the buses would have, two buses would have to do two loops. So kids would be dropped off, elementary kids would be picked up early if they were on the first loop. And then they'd be dropped off at like quarter of eight, I guess. And then they'd have to stay there in a, in, you know, like a cafeteria, I believe, and wait until eight-thirty before, before they could go down to class. So they were kind of put in a holding location, not ideal, so that those buses could be freed up to run and get another group of kids and come back. And so, you know, they're, you know, one, we can't, next year is highly unlikely we'll be able to congregate again. And, you know, with, with so many kids at the elementary school, this would allow for a much smoother transition and opening of this, of the arrival process. It would also help at, at the end of the day. So kids will not be on the buses as long as they were before. Principal Pines said that with the addition of this bus, the buses could arrive at like twenty after, let's say, and then go right into the classes. You know, they wouldn't have to be in some location randomly just because we can't provide adequate busing support for kids and family. So, so this would allow us to go to six buses. And the difference between what's in the budget and the pricing here is about fifty thousand dollars. And so I would ask, if I was you, where the money going to come from? So, so I asked that question and Jana pointed out that, you know, the savings from the accumulation. Sure. Is that better?
I'm sure it'll correct it if it's not.
Okay. Of, of these other bids will offset the increase to this. So Jana, if you look in her report, her financial report, she gave you a summary on her last page. If you look at the financial report that she provided, you want to go back and look at that? She gave you a summary of the savings from all of these different bids. I saw it. I'll show you what it looks like. It's on page twelve of her report. Put it up so you can see. Page twelve of Jana's report. It's the last page, I think, of her report. And she gives you a, a summary of operational savings projected. So if you look at that for FY twenty-two, the estimated cost was a hundred and fifty-seven of these particular contracts before you tonight, if you approve them. And the new calculated cost and then the savings per year. So you can see that next, next year's budget, we have fifty thousand dollars worth of money from these contracts that are in there. So that would go to offset the fifty thousand dollars we need for the bus transportation. So it, it's not that we would go into next year with a deficit, but in fact, we'd have a better service for, for students taking the bus, a more orderly arrival and dismissal process specifically at our elementary school. And that's where the money for, out of next year's budget would come from.
Can I ask real quick? If first student is the only place to get bus transportation on the seacoast, what, what's the check on them controlling their costs? They charge us? You know?
Well, I think that to, you know, work closely with them to make sure that what you're doing is reasonable and affordable, that the price that you're paying is, is, is worth the value of the service provided.
Okay.
We brought them to the board before. We've actually had them come to the board and talk to us because it is a lot of money.
They've worked with us and, and even, even in, I'll give you an example. Every time that we've had to make these changes, they come right in and we, we say this isn't working for us and they come up with a solution. And it, and it has, the solution hasn't been you pay more money. So they, they've actually been, which a lot of companies, when you make one little change, you know, they'll, they'll hop on an opportunity to, to charge you more. But I, I have to say that, and that's been my experience with transportation companies over my career in general, but they haven't been like that. So we've, we've tried to maintain a partnership relationship with them. And I, I think that, you know, they've, they've, we've been treated well and I, I don't think that there's, you know, they're, they're charging you excessively for. there's, you know, they're charging you excessively for the services that they're providing. I don't know that you really have a choice, because you have to provide the transportation and
All right. I have a question, I was just looking at this. It says that the bids, you opened up the dialogue with them back in March of two thousand and twenty, in regards to this, so that we're a year of negotiations with them?
Well, actually, last year, because we didn't have a BA and we were in the budget season and all of that, I asked the board if they would allow us to extend our contract by one year.
Okay.
The existing contract, to give us time to get somebody in place that could then write the bids and evaluate our needs and all of that. So there has been some dialogue, but Jana did work with the principals and put together an RFP based on what our current needs are. A lot of what you're seeing, like in the area of transportation and the area of food service and the area, in each area, we're going through and trying to define what our needs are now and then seek pricing and/or solutions that marry to what our needs are today, as opposed to just rolling things forward without giving it a good look. So that's why you're seeing this adjustment. This has been really problematic at the elementary school, I witnessed it last year. And this will go a long way, you know, the idea that you have kids kind of in a holding tank for forty-five minutes in the morning, just, you know, just because you had a bus contract, you know, five or ten years ago that you put into place, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, you know?
And then you see the empty buses, and everybody's wondering, why is the empty bus rolling down the street? Because they're going to the other side of town to pick up more kids.
Right, they drop, they pick up, and, yeah, so sometimes you might see one, because they might drop off all the students from the, because we share buses too, right? So they do runs and pick up the junior, senior high kids, they drop them off, then you're gonna see an empty bus go out again, right, to pick up the next round of kids and drop them off. And then if we are able to do a quick loop to the rec department, you'd see an empty bus leave campus at the elementary school and head over there and pick up the kids and then leave and then be empty again, so.
And then get the bus that's driving to SST and the empty bus is coming back to do loops, to pick up more kids.
Right, right, right. We share buses, they're, we share buses and try to
Do you remember when the last time we evaluated the distance that kids are walking as well as the routes?
I
It was during the reopening committee, there was some talk that they're, we have more routes than we used to or
Pat Valentine was still here?
Or that, yeah, it would be interesting, because I'm hesitant to get into a five-year contract without, I know we couldn't do it this year, obviously, but it seems like that's something we should really evaluate and see if we're, if we're, are we getting kids from half a mile or quarter mile away and we don't need to be? Are we, you know?
I think those are good questions. One of the things I do know about communities that are not, you know, really urban and almost, you know, on the verge of Really suburban, is that sometimes you might have bus routes in place because there's no safe way for students to walk to school. And it might not be a mileage thing. I know in my prior school district, we transported kids that were not, were within legal walking distance, but there were no sidewalks. So we didn't, so we provided a bus, because we didn't want kids that, you know, weren't old enough to drive or their parents, you know, weren't able to drive them to school to be able to get the kids to school safely. So sometimes it's a safety issue.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know what the situation is here, but I think it certainly is worthwhile to take a look at that once we can get back to whatever normal's gonna look like, you know, to see what options might be available to make some changes.
Any other questions? I seek a motion to approve the proposal number one for the contract with six buses with a one-year cost of four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents with our student buses.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Hemmerker. Move to the vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Up. Any additional?
I'm just being inclined to see if we could find a one- or two-year contract with them so that we'd have the opportunity to really evaluate. Again, I just think getting into a five-year contract without knowing the last time we've evaluated.
I think the challenge with that is that it was bid for five years, because when you enter into the contract, they take their fixed costs, which is buying new buses, and they depreciate them over the course of the contract. So I would, I would guess that if we only want to do a two-to-three-year contract, that the price is gonna go up.
Yeah, it's gonna go up.
Because they, they'll have to depreciate the buses over a two-to-three-year period, not a five.
And I think we've even had a seven at some point, if I'm
We've, and again, I
Eons ago.
I think if you, if you ask Jana, she could give that answer, but I think what Susan's saying is pretty, sums it up. We've tried to go less and it actually cost us more. So we've always done this. But I still think to reevaluate the walkers wouldn't hurt, but I don't think it's gonna make much of a difference. That would risk, I mean, we have to have buses.
Yeah, I think if we were gonna do that before all the work that went into putting an RFP together, we would, that would be the time to do that, but this has been a project, you know.
In five years from now, Gary, there might be another bus. There was talk of another bus company starting up, COVID hit. I'm hoping that will start up again, but it takes a while to establish that, but I know that Newmarket was on their radar.
Any more discussion? Then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. And the last one is the photocopiers and printers bid.
So the leases on copiers expires this year, and so, you know, that's the time that you take a look at this. And so you can see the work that went behind evaluating what our needs are again and, you know, taking a look at options and what would make sense for us moving forward. And so Jason and Jana, I think, did a great job evaluating this, you know, copier and printer bids, and they're recommending that we go with SimQuest, both for the equipment and service costs for our copiers as well as our print management software. And so in combination, the bid would be fifty-six, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-three cents for the first year. And the other part of that is that in order for us to enter into a lease, I have to read this really long passage that you will have to vote on, authorizing us to enter into a five-year lease arrangement for these copier services, copiers and the services, I should say. So maybe we take it one at a time, because I literally, Jana said, I have to read this entire thing to you.
The first item, I seek a motion to accept the proposal from SimQuest for a first-year cost of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and three dollars, sixty-three cents for a five-year contract.
I have some new, because I apologize, I have some questions. All the time, should I? Real quick, eliminating twenty-three printers? You know where those printers are being? Okay. I was, from experience as a teacher, seeing printers disappear in workrooms, that was my biggest concern, but it seems like this is probably on the building level where they talked about the
Exactly.
Okay.
I don't know. But if you'd like this information, we can certainly table this and I can have, or you can send me the questions and I can get the response and we can
I obviously trust, but this was in, I just want to make sure that this decision included the building-level principles or what have you and not just central office.
I do, I do note in Jana's letter
I can't answer the question.
Okay.
It does say, in advance of the bid process, we carefully evaluated our printing needs and in conjunction with our building administrators, we eliminated a total of twenty-three single printers, added one photocopy and replaced all existing equipment with brand-new equipment.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for pointing that out, I missed that part.
No problem.
May I just ask a question, maybe, Andrew, you could tell me. A duplexer, right now we have twenty-seven, but we're proposing to do thirty-nine. Would that assist in teachers being able to print? When I'm looking at units traded in, it's sixty-one, we're replacing certain, you look at the photocopiers, I see a large jump from duplexers, which is down in line nine, as well as finishers.
Well, I do know what those are.
Does that help, Andrew?
Oh, yeah, so you think those are maybe like the copy, where they like, they used to use copiers, now they're copiers slash printers?
Susan, what's a duplexer?
A duplexer is, when you put a stack of papers in to the top
Right.
And it sucks, and it takes it and it'll copy on both sides. It's called a duplexit.
Okay.
So it brings in and it
Okay, and often those now are connected to the printer.
And the finisher is the thing on the side where if you collate, it pushes everything out in different packages and it'll staple it. That's called a finisher. So I know what those things are, but I don't
And those probably are, also have the ability to print then.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I just saw that, I started having my nightmares again of not being able to print anything for a year, so, thank you.
Andrew, it's good to have that perspective, because I wouldn't think of that, you know, and you, but you live it every day.
Yeah, fortunately for a year.
You're like, I lost my printer and I'm not letting it happen again. Any more questions?
I want my two dollars.
All right, so I seek a motion to accept the bid from SimQuest for a five-year contract with a first-year cost estimated of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Rant. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved. I seek a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a five-year tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with MST Government Leasing as outlined in the attached document entitled Vote.
Jana said I literally have to read this whole thing, so
So we'll do the motion. I seek a motion for that. Anybody?
So moved.
Thank you, I need a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Hemmerker and a second from Mr. Swanson. Susan, if you would read the document as it is, we'll proceed after that.
Vote that the superintendent of schools or her designee is authorized to execute and deliver a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with MST Government Leasing LLC in the name and on behalf of the Newmarket School District, the issuer, for the purpose of refunding and refinancing existing lease purchases of photocopier equipment and lease purchasing additional new and reconditioned photocopier equipment, any servants' agreements specifically financed a connection with certain equipment, consulting fees and related costs of issuance with an aggregated purchase price not exceeding one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents at a rate of interest of not more than three point two-nine percent per year through August first, two thousand and twenty-five, and otherwise in such form as a superintendent may approve, and that the appropriate officials of the issuer hereby are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the issuer such other documents and certificates as may be required in connection with such tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, and that no part of the proceedings of said tax-exempt lease purchase agreement shall be used directly or indirectly to acquire any securities or obligations, the acquisition of which would cause the tax-exempt lease purchase agreement to be private, active bond and/or arbitrage bond within the meaning of sections one forty-one and one forty-eight, respectively of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended the code, and that the tax-exempt lease purchase agreement issued pursuant here to be designated as a qualified tax-exempt obligation within the meaning of section two sixty-five B, three, capital B, of said code, and that the superintendent be and hereby is authorized to covenant on behalf of the issuer to file any informational report and pay any rebate or rebate due to the United States in connection with the issuance of said tax-exempt lease purchase agreements, and to take all other lawful actions necessary to ensure that the interest portion of the rental under and pursuant to the tax-exempt lease purchase agreement will be excluded from the gross income of the owners thereof for purposes of federal income tax taxation and to refrain from taking any action which shall cause such interest portion of the rental payments to become includeable in the gross income of the owners thereof. The Newmarket School Board also authorizes the superintendent of schools of the Newmarket School District or her designee to sign an agreement with the Specialized Purchasing Consultants, Inc., relating to acquisition of photocopying equipment for the issuer, and authorizes such persons to make any elections under the contract not exceeding the aggregate purchase price of this authorizing vote.
Hearing, any discussion on that?
Can you do it again, please?
We'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Susan, if you will review quickly the job descriptions for the food services.
Oh, yes. So again, our business administrator, Jana Mellon, has been working with our food service director, Linda Hopie, to look at, you know, what our current program is, what are our current needs, and how do they put together a program that meets all of our requirements moving forward. And so they've been meeting and meeting and meeting and coming up with a plan for next year to introduce more fresh and locally-made food for our students. And in the way that they imagine this, they want to restructure some of the job descriptions to better support in-house food preparation. And so the job descriptions before you reflect their work over the last several months. And in the process of developing these job descriptions and, you know, performance requirements, they've also looked at what salaries would be appropriate for these particular positions based on local comparison information. And so those are incorporated into this, as you know, or maybe some of you don't know, we have had a lot of difficulty finding applicants for both facilities and our food service program. We have looked at most of, most other areas and have done market analysis for positions every time that we, you know, introduced, you know, a restructuring of some sort to make sure that, you know, the pay is applicable to the responsibilities and it's consistent with, you know, market rates. So all that work has been done, and what's before you tonight is three revised and updated job descriptions to support, you know, our new, reimagined food service program.
Just so that the relatively newer board members know, one of the challenges that we've had going forward is having job descriptions and having a concentrated human resources focus, because there hasn't been that person. So I think, you know, as Susan's been here, looking at different areas, it's appropriate for us to look at, again, what the needs are, but what are the jobs that we need to do? How do we take them to the next level and produce a job description to that effect? Because that was not always happening.
As someone who writes them, these are wonderful.
All right. Any more questions about those? Then I seek a motion to approve the food service job descriptions listed in our packet.
I make a motion?
We have a motion from Mr. Rant, we need a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McKinney, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. The next thing is the, and we discussed this a few weeks back, the proposed calendar for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-two school year next I seek a motion to approve the calendar that we discussed at the last meeting.
Can I just make one note that at our last board meeting, we talked about, you know, the academic, the value of having inclement weather days be able to be turned into a learning day for students. And so those two proposals that we talked about for student independent workdays that support our calendar, I said I would bring forward with this and they're in your packet. I just wanted to make note that
Thank you.
That it's, it's, it's the package, you know? We can't do the calendar without, without the support of the full-day independent learning days and, and of course, the inclement weather proposal allows us to kind of really fix, for the most part, what the last day of school is. And then therefore, as a result of that, we can set the graduation date.
Right.
You know, so families know well in advance. So, I just wanted to point those, those couple of things out that, that they're all...
I seek a motion to approve the 2020, 21, excuse me, 2021-22 proposed school calendar with the addition of the inclement weather distance learning proposal.
So, moved?
Second.
Motion from Ms. McKinney with a second, Mr. Swanson. Any discussion?
I just want to say real quick that the people that emailed or said anything about the difficulty with having these days once a month, that it's not lost on me and I'm sure none of you guys, but I feel like the value for these is really important as we move forward. Unfortunately, it just, it's kind of a cost-benefit analysis and as a parent, I know the difficulty. And so, it's not lost on us and I, I really hope that we get an idea of what goes on during those days after they're done, just kind of see the, see the products afterwards, just kind of see that, so the community sees what we get out of it. And I have no doubt it's valued, but I just think the community needs to see that, so...
I mean, that's a good point. And I think to your point, in the report that was presented, we tried to really call out a lot of the work that takes place on those days. So, you know, to give, to start to educate people about, you know, the work that does need to happen in school districts if you're going to be able to move forward with the school improvement efforts, so. But we can continue to do more with communicating that out.
Yeah.
You know? We publish, at least since I've been here, you know, pretty extensive, you know, professional development and, and workdays for, for staff. I've shared them with the board when we create them.
Yeah.
Beginning of the school year, you know, that it really is quite involved.
And it might, it might be beneficial, Andrew, to your point, to widen that net of communication just so people can see what's going on, even if you don't fully conceptualize what a PD, professional development PD is. But if you can say, you know, that list that's in the, the proposed changes for the schedule, I think it's good.
Yeah, I think like, especially the emotion that's involved about trying to figure out where you're going to drop your kid that day, it's often, it creates blinders.
Right.
And I think that's, I think as a board, we need to make an effort to really show the value that comes out of these.
And I think the positive is that, you know, we're doing this now. It's a little bit later than it normally would have been, but it still gives people ample time to say, "Okay, this, these are the days that I'm going to need to prioritize for next year." And obviously, things are going to happen, but at least you have that as far as possible.
Yeah, and thank you for the stuff I, I do see. As a teacher, I see, "Oh, this is so cool." So, thank you for what you do do with the, showing us what the PD does. So, thank you.
And, and of course, we did have a parent town hall meeting and I did review this with them. And then other, any follow-up? Sometimes, you know, I certainly answer all the questions that are there, but if, you know, oftentimes, if there's something that continues to be a challenge, but I have not gotten any, any additional questions about that or comments.
Yeah, I just know like after like taking like, having, like I got Friday, taking Friday off from work and then being angry like specifically on that day and then like afterwards, you know, "Oh, this is what you got out of it." Would be kind of cool.
So, we have the motion to forward to accept the 2021-22 proposed calendar with the inclement weather distance learning proposal. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Unanimously approved. The next thing is the, I seek a motion to approve the in-person learning plan and the fiscal year 2021 school calendar amendments that were in the packet that Susan discussed earlier.
I make a motion?
We have a motion from Mr. Durant. We need a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. McKinney. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 One more thing, I'm going to sort of move the agenda around. We had a non-meeting prior to the meeting to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the New Market Teachers Association and I seek a motion to approve NTA MOA number four. We have a motion from Mr. Swanson and a second from Ms. McKinney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. That is all of the business that we're going to do in public. We need to transfer to non-public session just for the public's certification. We will return to vote on some things, but we're not going to be on TV again. I seek a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A32A and B. We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Swanson. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hammacher?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Sheldon, aye. Mr. Ant?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
We enter non-public session at 6:34 PM.